Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Tuckerton Borough Council on January the twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. Brad Cook, would you please read the Public Meeting Act Statement?
Yes, provisions of the Open Public Media have been applied with this notice published to the Beacon and the Esri Park Press being in time being place for the meeting.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland?
Right.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Colangelo?
Here.
Mr. Deamore?
Here.
Mr. Dupree?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mayor Martin?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, will be all scanned, please, for the privacy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great cause which stands and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, uh, first quarter of business is, I think, please, that's wonderful. Uh, let's get what we can get. Oh, Mr. Peterson, if you may, please, yes.
I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State in New Jersey appointing Jared S. Miller as a full-time police officer.
I move that.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
I'm standing.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we can go through. All right, so. Oh, my, why are you there? You wear a lot. You look like that swan. Let's put it down there. All right, um, I will say this, and then you repeat that feeling, okay? I, and state your name.
I, Jared Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of police officer.
All the duties of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
There we go. Congratulations. We're just gonna sign it anyway, they already wrote here. We're pressing it.
That's good.
And congratulations, welcome to our family. Sure, absolutely.
Anybody else come up? Don't be shy.
Did anybody want to get a photo?
Got it for your pocket, huh?
Tell me today.
Well, I mean, yeah, 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 sure, yeah. Wait a minute, oh, not me? Yeah, okay. Gotta get out of the way.
Good to go?
Yeah, we're good.
So, anybody's here with Jared, don't have to stay for the meeting. Feel free to leave now if you want. All right?
I see once in a while, but like, there's some passing, but yeah. But that's my boy, he's so proud. Yeah, I'm proud, yeah.
Now you guys can see me from farther back. Oh, wow. Okay. It's amazing, isn't it? That's wonderful. All right, so now, uh, we're going to go on to number six on the agenda of legislation. Councilman Breland.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Um, tonight I have the first reading of amendment to the ordinance for construction code uniform for the Borough Code supplementing the cost of fees for different permits throughout the borough. Um, tonight will be the first reading, the second reading will be on February seventeenth, and the public hearing will be on the sev- on the seventeenth as well. So, tonight I have an ordinance for the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey amendment supplementing chapter one thirty-two of the Borough Code entitled Construction Code Uniform, and I move this on first reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this ordinance for the first reading. Roll call, vote please.
I just want to, uh, clarify one thing on here. I know we just did this. What happens is this goes then to the State Department of Community Affairs, and they have to review it to make sure that our costs, um, are not, you know, are meeting what we're bringing in and are the costs that we go with them. And the one thing that they asked us to do was change the temporary CO. It used to say fifty dollars for a temporary CO. We had to drop that to thirty dollars. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. So, um, Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all I have this evening, y'all.
Okay, very good, and we have to take care of this, because I'm saving it. We're the next meeting, we go. All right. Let's go down to the final, Councilman Martin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have multiple resolutions, um, this evening, but I had a couple things, uh, I wanted to announce first. Uh, first off is, in speaking with Penny from the food bank, she has signed up for what's called the Next Trucks Recycling Challenge. Um, I actually have this, and I could touch it down, I will get it up on the website as well.
Okay.
Basically, it's a twelve-month challenge. Uh, the goal is to collect a minimum of a thousand pounds of plastic. And then what happens with that thousand pounds of plastic is they will turn it into a trucks bench that can then be, uh, placed in town. So, if we can, you know, collect two thousand pounds or three thousand, it's, there's no limit on it, um, so we can get multiple benches out of it. It's something that, um, I know our environmental commission, uh, Kailin, had looked into it, I think like, two years ago. Um, I heard her talking about it, and then, in conjunction with the, uh, food pantry, the program's going. So, um, we are signed up, we are registered for it and starting. Um, so it is only certain kinds of plastics, it's not everything. Um, so I will, I'll get this up, uh, under like, public notices, and then again, under the environmental commission on the website, so that it's up and we can see it. And we should be getting posters and, um, bins, recycling bins, that will go.
Oh, wow.
Over at the food pantry as well.
Nice.
So, so that's nice, and, you know, hopefully, we can collect enough plastic to get some nice benches for around in town. Second is, I've been attending a lot of, uh, coastal resiliency, marsh restoration seminars over the past couple months. One of the organizations is the Coastal Resiliency Collaboration, and that's, you know, a bunch of different organizations that have gotten together to form this collaboration to try to get marsh restoration done, uh, living shorelines done, stuff like that. Basically, I would like to have the Borough in Comfort Inn join that coalition and be officially a part of the group. I figured it would be better to be done by way of resolution with the support of all the council, instead of me just saying that, you know, we're interested in doing it. Uh, it's completely free, there's no, no charge to join. I'm going to all these meetings and stuff anyway, so it'd be nice to be an official member there and a partner with them to try to get something done. There's been some very promising things, uh, concerning Thompson's Creek.
Mm-hmm.
That, uh, it looks like the state and the feds are kind of turning into the direction of, you know, possibly we could get something done with their help going forward. So, uh, with that, I make a motion that the Borough of Tuckerton, uh, put in an application to join the Coastal Resiliency Collaboration. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to join this resiliency, uh, organization. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, wonderful.
Uh, all right, into the nitty-gritty. Uh, I have a resolution, um, to increase the temporary budget for this year. So, the temporary appropriation for the total amount for the current fund will be three million, three hundred fifty-one thousand, four hundred four dollars and thirty-six cents, and the utility fund will be one million, six hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. This is called officially an emergency appropriation, there's nothing emergency about it, I've done it every year that I've been up here on it. Um, you know, the word emergency is misleading, but it just allows us to keep paying bills going forward until we've adopted, uh, our permanent res- our current budget for two thousand and twenty-five. So with that, I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing an emergency appropriation in accordance with NJ SA forty A colon four dash twenty, and I move this resolution. Second.
I have a motion and a second on this resolution as read. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my next resolution will be for payment and claims for the month. This month, uh, we'll be sending out three hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents in bills. I wanted to point out two of them. Um, we have one check that's gonna go out for forty-five thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and eighty cents, that is for the sidewalk project on Marine Street. Um, that is CDPG, uh, grant funding, so it's not, um, you know, directly a taxpayer cost, but it shows on the bills list going out. Uh, and then, our big one this month is for our gym insurance, our first quarter payment is one hundred thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. So, between those two things, it makes up, um, you know, over half and, half of our payments going out. Uh, so I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing payment claims in the amount of three hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars, twenty-two cents, and I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on, uh, the payment of claims. Were there any other questions from anyone? I see none, roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. My next resolution has to do with selling off of certain municipal vehicles, uh, one being nineteen ninety-six Ford F-150, a two thousand twelve Chevy Tahoe, and a two thousand six Mac. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the sale of certain municipal, municipal vehicles, and I move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
My next resolution is authorizing, um, an electronic taxing. So, a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the tax collector to hold an electronic taxing, and I move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for the electronic tax sale. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And then my final resolution this evening, Mayor, is for the release of a performance bond. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing release of a performance bond guarantee in the amount of five thousand dollars for sewer connection at six ninety-eight North Green Street, and I move this resolution. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as read. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that is all I have. I'll have one quick announcement under, uh, committee meetings.
Okay. Put you down for that. All right, next we go on to public works order and sewer. Councilman Colangelo.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I'll be reading two resolutions this evening, one has to do with a road opening on King Fisher Road due to reconnecting the gas, and finally, we're going to award a contract for chlorine analyzers, uh, service. Uh, have one, uh, two announcements, the public works yard will be closed February the seventeenth, that's President's Day, trash pickup will be one day later than normal. And also, uh, all residents have the opportunity to sign up for NIXIL alerts, and you text to eight 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 seven seven seven, and the message is your zip code, zero eight zero eight seven, and that'll get you NIXIL alerts, anything that happened in the thorough that, uh, need to be, uh, made aware of. With that in mind, a resolution of Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing approval of a road opening permit on King Fisher Road for block one thirteen lot twenty-two, and granting relief under section two, twenty-nine dash fifteen of the Borough Code, and that is to reconnect the gas at three forty-two King Fisher Road, and move this resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then I have a resolution of Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey awarding the two thousand and twenty-five contract for the biannual service for two chlorine analyzers at the Water Peak and Facility Number Two to hack service plus. The hack service plus cemented the lowest and the only price of three thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars, and move this resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as presented. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Your Honor, thank you.
All right, really good, and thank you for the information on the NIXILs. I haven't been getting them, so I'm just gonna sign up again. All right, next is public buildings and grounds, community affairs, Councilman Deamore.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two resolutions this evening. The first one, uh, is for some work at the ball field. Uh, we have a grant that, uh, we're, um, getting a new backstop for the ball field, uh, and some other work done too. But, um, the other one is, um, some ADA work, uh, they're fixing the sidewalks in front of the, uh, grist mill, uh, that's for, um, wheelchair act- people with restricted access. So, the resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey awarding a contract to Challenger Fence Incorporated, unauthorized vendor of Bergen County Cooperative Purchasing Contract, DC dash twenty-four dash zero zero four, for Bay Avenue Ball Field Backstop. Uh, the amount is for forty-five thousand, seventy-five dollars. I made this motion.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution for the Bay Avenue Ball Field Backstop. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
The second resolution is Resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the conveyance of temporary sidewalk easement and sidewalk agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation. I made this motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, Councilman Dupree.
Your Honor, I have, uh.
Lots of minutes.
Two things to take care of this evening. Uh, first is the approval of amendments for, uh, December, uh, sixteenth, December twenty-third, and January first meeting. Does any of the council members have any additions or corrections they'd like to make to the minutes? I have one that I'd like to add, the addition of the liaison of fire EMS was not in the minutes for any of those meetings.
I think I fixed them, but I didn't give you a copy.
Okay, I apologize. All right, in that case, I, uh, I so moved that we accept the minutes as written.
No second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as presented.
Right after forty-four, I think it was, she didn't put any of them in, the original, I'm sorry, but the, the new version that I gave, uh, I think I copied it for everybody, right underneath, uh, Resolution forty-four dash twenty-five, it lists, um, and I'll make that correction, and you're adopting it with that correction, it lists all the liaisons to the boards.
Right. The second item, Your Honor, I had the report from Parker Town Fire Company, and , uh, they responded to seven fire calls, twelve EMS calls in the borough for the month of December, and, uh, the officers have completed the pre-pact plans, uh, for all the commercial buildings in the town, and the copies were sent to the respective offices in the county. That happens from, uh, Frank Ronzich. That's all I had, Your Honor.
Okay, we're gonna go back and finish, we're gonna vote on those.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, I was in such a hurry to get through that, but, uh.
Right.
I so moved that we accept those minutes.
Nice, I did.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes with the correction that will be made, so roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next is law and public safety, Councilman Peterson.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, I have, I have one resolution to read, uh, uh, shared services apparently across your Peters office. I also have the police activity report for December twenty twenty-four, and one other thing after that to touch on. That being said, I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the executive, the execution of a shared service agreement with the County of Ocean for the prosecutor's program. I move that resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this, uh, resolution as presented. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, uh, the monthly activity report for December twenty twenty-four for the police department, calls for service were two hundred sixty-one, arrests were eight, motor vehicle stops were nine hundred and seven, motor vehicle summons were forty-four, motor vehicle accidents were sixteen, medical was twenty-nine, and suspicious person in vehicle checks were fourteen. And one other thing I'd like to touch on, Your Honor, uh, it was brought to my attention that it was one of our neighbors walking down the street very confused, and here he had Parkinson's. They got him home, the family member's family, but, and, uh, in return for that, I went in and I talked to the chief about the program that we have set up to help these type of people. And, uh, we do have a program, the problem with the program is the people aren't given the information to the police department. They have a system that they can put it in the cars that our police officer will know if they pull somebody over, uh, try and locate where they're at and who they are. In order to do that, there's some things that they need, like they, they would need a picture of the person, his disability, uh, type of disability, whether it be Alzheimer's, autism, autism, depression, dementia, Down's syndrome, et cetera. I need the person's age, contact phone number, uh, cell phone numbers of people, and any other information that they think might be, uh, important to turn over to the police. With doing this, our officers can pinpoint who somebody is and help them to get them back to where they belong, contact the people that, whether they're a caregiver, a taker, a family member. I think it's a, it's a very good program, and we need to utilize it, and the only way we can is by getting the information to the police department. So please pass the word along, whether it be to your neighbors, your friends, anyone you talk to, uh, it's something that we really should not take care of. I think, Your Honor.
All right.
Go ahead.
Thank you, that's, uh, sounds like a very good program that we should, you know, really try and push, get people involved in. All right, um, next is, uh, my form, and you guys have really covered everything that's going on, so I'm going to pass on to Mr. Rogers.
I'll pass on to the clerk.
Okay. Okay, I have two things this evening, the first thing I have is a resolution for executive session, it's a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey providing for an executive session in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act to discuss sale of municipal, uh, public property.
I made that motion.
session, it's a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerden County Evotion State of New Jersey providing for an executive session in accordance with the Urban Public Meeting Act to discuss sale of municipal public property.
I made that motion.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, roll call vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. DeMore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the other thing I have is a application for a raffle license from Gianna's gift from heaven. They're requesting waiver fee and the date is two fifteen twenty-five.
I so moved that.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, let's see, what? For a raffle, thank you, raffle application for February fifteenth, roll call vote please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. DeMore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, very good, thank you very much. And now we're down to reports, commissions, boards, everything. Brian, will you send your head some?
Yes. Well, it's not an official Borough Committee, the Flatlands Fourth of July Fireworks Committee held the fireworks on January first, so we were here for a reorg meeting, and then over to that. The wind died down just enough before six o'clock that the fireworks show was able to go off, I know I saw you out there freezing.
Yes.
It was very, very cold and breezy, but it was, it was really neat, it was a really good...
It was a very good show.
Good fireworks show.
About twelve minutes, that's ideal, twelve minutes, ten, twelve minutes, and it was a nice little thing to come out to.
And the wind was nice because it actually moved the smoke from the fireworks away so fast that every firework that went off was crystal clear, so it was, it was neat and it was very well attended. I mean, I walked down from Seaport down into front of Stewart's, and there was a nice line of people, and there's somebody that was over at Tipton Park, it's at the parking lot, they were all by the tennis courts there, so it was, it was quite a good turnout for such a really blustery cold New Year's day.
Groups of people all around town, right, that's good.
So, on behalf of the Flatlands Fourth of July fireworks committee, wanted to thank the town, thank Jenny, for rushing to try to get the paperwork through, get the insurance, get everything lined up so that, so that that event could happen, because it was kind of last minute.
Last minute.
Decided to put together, but pulled, pulled it through, and it was, it was really, really nice to see. And then I do actually have a second one, because I remembered it as we were going through. Kaylin Ullman sent me an email today for the Tuckerden Borough Community Cleanup, which will be held on April fifth, which is a Saturday, nine AM with a rain date of Sunday at nine AM. It's really small writing, I'm sorry. But we're gonna provide bags, gloves, all that kind of stuff for people to go around and clean up trash around the community, so I will get, I will get this that she sent me up on the website as well, and, but April fifth, Community Cleanup Act for the Borough of Tuckerden.
Excellent. Kaylin does a very good job of organizing things and getting the word out, so that's great.
And we still have an alternate position available on environmental, if anybody in the community else is interested in joining. Now that's all I have.
All right, is there anything else? All right, so now we're ready to go for public.
I move to open the public forum, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to open public forum, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, we're now open for questions or comments from the public, as you remember, we have a five-minute rule. Do we have any questions or comments this evening? Mr. Egbert, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Name's Lee Underwood, one twenty-one, well, in the Tuckerson, Tuckerden. The first thing I want to address is Mr. Dupree's comments were lies at the last meeting. He stated here I never was, never will be, like, remember Parker Town, I said all the plaque that I got your strategic, the blackboard I was, far as I know, the status hasn't changed, okay? He said I blur about misinformation. I don't, I don't think so, do you find any, you know, give me specifics, I'll address it, but I kind of try and like be truthful, have my facts before I say something, especially here in public, I'm recording and when it's on TV and so forth, so that's not true. And calling the council corrupt, yeah, I think there's some things that go on or could be classified corrupt, but you want me to make a list of them, I would be glad to. And he said I was responsible, he pointed at me, said I was responsible for the fire company being closed down, that's a lie. I was not responsible for the fire company being closed down, it was you people taking the order of the state guy, which we approved was a lot of crap, so, I leave it from now on, can you just be honest with each other, please, okay? Another thing was, you said I filed a complaint, there was absolutely nothing found, that was another lie, I have the copy right here, and I put it out there also, and yeah, they did mine, so, but there was a battery, so, I'll, I'll tell you to tell the truth, I appreciate you told the truth. And we had another discussion about Mr. Morton's meeting on December sixteenth, I don't know if you remember that. If you want to go back to the eleven November sixth twenty-three meeting, I started talking about listed demands like LoSAP, they weren't demands, they were negotiated, please, but you accuse us of being demands. You go to five minutes fifty-four seconds, it begins, where you talk about asking the current leadership to resign, and by the way, that motion was approved, Terry, I approved it, except Mike, he was told abstain, but they just applied Parker Town.
I did not, I wasn't gonna ask.
You abstained.
I abstained.
The lawyer, it's right on the tape, Mr. Conner's recommended, because we just applied Parker Town. But the funny thing was, that motion was made, seconded, and you voted to approve it, but nobody came over and asked anybody at the firehouse to resign, the leadership to resign, we know of, none of us were aware of anything like that happening, so I just want to make that point, it's been well over a year, still haven't heard anything about that. So, as you go into the November sixth, November sixth meeting at that five fifty-four mark, you said you wanted me to find it, well, people, firehouse found it, and we have the little tape for him, I'm trying to play here if you want, because the first thing on here will be, we spoke at the December sixteenth meeting, and then it goes into what you said at the November meeting, people more technically advanced than me did this.
So, council meeting, if we all resign, we're gonna assess taxes on our building. Finally, I, I where I said that, if you don't resign, watch your time, I where you said, if you don't resign, I am going to put taxes on your building, and I resign from this council.
Very good, very good.
Mr. Dupree, you are furthering my recommendation that the this Borough Council counter taxes on certain designation of the building and grounds, H one eleven four three street, to remove the tax free status, and I think we're set, this will be asked on your board to resign.
Very good, so, the problem I have, I come in here and say something, or I say something that passed and gets brought up. All you people heard the same thing I did last November, and for some reason, that's the first meeting I look back with something locked in my brain, I was done in November, and it was, and I'd like to thank the members of the fire company that put this video together, so I hope you keep it or resign, I think a few other designs councilmen need to resign too, okay? Now, the last thing I wanted to say is Spider Booth, where it says, it talks about the word impartially, and do your job here, okay? You have this five-minute rule, Mayor, I mean, I've had Pete Breland say right in the middle of my conversation, I take five minutes is up, like, it's time to go away, but you left PGLO, talked way over five minutes, Eric Cantson a few meetings ago, so you people don't even go by your own office, it's disgusting, thank you very much.
Your Honor, by May...
Yes.
What Mr. Egbert is talking about, when I had stated that there were no violations found, he knows darn well what we were talking about, he filed a PO ship complaint against the fire company. The investigator came in and found of the twenty-six air packs that we had, three had low battery alarms on them, and as a point of interest, they were taken care of right then and there, what happened, they inadvertently didn't use industrial batteries on it, they weren't inspected. But it appears to me that I caught wind of something that went on, somebody happened to send information about air packs, possibly to the investigator to try and escalate what went on, I don't know who would do that, and somebody just had the clue, try and make it worse than it actually sounded, that's all it was, it was low battery alarms. But, Mr. DeMore, if you will, read this right here, this letter that came from PO ship, and this might address one...
One fifteen twenty-two-five, it's addressed to Frank Runzich, Parker Town Fire Company, eight thirty railroad avenue, Little A, Harvard, New Jersey. PO ship file number C six-nine dash seventeen dash O six-two. Dear Chief Runzich, a safety inquiry was initiated via email on eleven eight twenty-two-four. As a result of the complaint to the Office of Public Employees Occupational Safety and Health concerning a report of a boat fire on October twenty-seven twenty-two-four in West Tuckerden, New Jersey, where members of the Parker Town Fire Company operated a charged hose line from a boat deck while wearing turnout gear and without flotation devices. Response to the inquiry was received via email on eleven fourteen twenty-two-four. Upon evaluation of the submitted correspondence, PO ship has determined that your response is adequate. PO ship has determined that the selection of PPE during this incident is at the discretion of the incident commander. Therefore, we are closing our file on this matter, and no further action is anticipated to be taken by PO ship at this time. We appreciate your prompt notification, response to the work-related incident, and your willingness to conduct an internal investigation, provide those findings, and take the action to correct any hazard that were found in order to protect employees from similar incident. This is signed, Robert Kishler, Assistant Chief, Office of Public Employees Occupational Safety and Health.
Now, see, nobody ran to social media and cherry picked anything to add to this letter whatsoever. This letter is available, we'll give a copy to anyone that needs it, but again, as I stated, zero issues were charged to the fire company. And we can cherry pick and say, well, look, look, don't look at this, look at, look at that. It was taken care of, and that's the difference between this issue and what may have happened at another fire company. The fire company, Parker Town, which is gladly serving Tuckerden, was willing to correct any issues that came up, they were willing to work with the state, state came in because they were turned in by a person from the community, turned in every one of the fire companies in the area for retaliation purposes, I feel, that's my opinion, because they didn't like how they were treated, possibly because of their own actions, I'm not certain about that, I wasn't part of it, but it, it makes sense to me that a person from the community that turned all these fire companies in, that shamed everybody up here on the dais, that you guys are against volunteers and this, that, and the other thing, but then you have Mr. Egbert here who just conveniently turned in every other volunteer organization in the area for things that he felt that they did that he got in trouble for or something, so, really self-reflection, Mr. Egbert, turning everybody else in for what you felt you were wrong, where's the caring, where is the caring about other volunteer organizations?
Going back to a statement that you made about who's responsible for the fire department being shut down, this really comes back to you. The reason I'm saying this is that a letter from the authority having jurisdiction sent us a letter to, over two years ago now, saying that the fire department was not in compliance. They gave you an opportunity to correct the deficiency. When this was not done, when we received the letter, the, we, our only alternative is to stop the, the operation of the fire department because of the liability. No insurance company is going to cover the town if, in, in the case of an emergency or something happens, if that letter is hanging over the top of us. So unless you are willing to go to the state and correct the deficiencies, we have no other alternative. It's not a matter of choice, it's, we have to have fire coverage and we have to be responsible for the liability.
That might be pushed for, can you, on Monday, set up Monday night, we got closed on Tuesday, but they'll help until the tenth Friday to get the information, and a lot of, a lot of information is wrong and they don't...
You could have any, any time in the nineteen months after that corrected the problem, and it would have returned to service. Nineteen months you had to correct the problem. Every time the state comes out, remember, they're the authority having jurisdiction, every time they come out, they give everyone an opportunity, they never just say you have a problem and shut you down, they try to work with you. You said here in the meeting that you would not go to the state and try to work with these people. What other alternatives did we have?
I didn't have...
We cannot just ignore them.
We, whatever was deficient, whatever was, in the first place, they were setting bail notices on wrongdoing, we proved that, we got the letter right from the council.
You're arguing the points now, we needed to correct the problem.
We corrected everything in time for that agreement, except the fact that you wanted to listen to what Mr. Nelson said, which was, oh, we showed you everything. Mike, when America came and saw our...
Without a letter from them clearing you, there is no way...
Well, there was somebody wants them to say, that's what happened, and what I want to say as far as...
Stop for a second.
Yeah.
You had your say, our council...
I want to tell you what he said.
Excuse me?
I'll be here next meeting, thank you.
That's fine. Are there any other comments?
What the hell, we're moving. All right, number two.
Paul Solomani, twenty-eight, Water Drive, Tuckerden, New Jersey, we just had our PCA meeting, PCUAD meeting this past Sunday, a lot of people in show because it was the Eagle Canyon, which I got a lot of those excuses. We only had ten people attend this, this last meeting, but we did have, our petition's up to one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine for Constance Creek dredging. We nailed down the date of May thirty-first for our spring party, anyone here is welcome, um, Jenny, Mr. Connors, anyone of you up there, it's gonna be a good party this year, we have Brandon Ironman coming, I locked him down because our neighbor's big singer passed away, he had the band. Other than that, you don't really need to know about any of this other stuff, I just, you know, the mudslinging of the fire company is getting really old, especially when you don't keep your credentials in order, and I said this a couple of times at, at this council meeting, last year, probably the year before, as an electrician, if you don't keep your credentials up, you don't work, it's plain and simple. Now we have a state-issued journey license, you know, I can't even count how many classes I had to take, the state currently, I was still working, from lifts to lulls to hazmat courses, depending where we were working, it's not that hard. Of course it wasn't, because we have our own school, I, I think the farmer and I have our own school too, that they can go to and take the classes, get upgraded and all that. I think you guys did the right thing, I'm sure he's not gonna be real happy with me, but I don't really, I really don't care if he's happy with me. Again, you guys are doing the right thing, I appreciate what you're doing, I just wish the whole Facebook, excuse me, present bullshit would stop, people just, they get real brave and put all this crap on Facebook, and I've said this before at these meetings also, for different occasions, people get like Facebook brave or something, it's a different world with social media now, you know, people just, they gotta grow up and learn how to push I also ordered another tripod that I'm personally going to deliver to the senior management. I just, I'll talk to you up in the meeting then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments.
What are you hiding?
Yes, that means ours has nothing to say. Mr. McNeil...
I'm fine with you.
Okay. You were taking pictures, do you have anything to say? No. Well, read about it, right?
Yep.
Great.
Motion to close the public forum, second.
All right, I have a motion in the second to close public forum. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes opposed, or not opposed?
Can we adjourn or vote recesses?
I'm not certain.
I don't think we're gonna have a chance to be taken.
Okay, so we, you can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All right, a motion in the second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes opposed? All right, thank you very much for coming this evening, stay warned.